Okay, we are on, today is Wednesday, April 1st, 2015. It's 4:30 in the afternoon and we will begin our council meeting. May I please have a roll call? Funker, Brad Hent, Greg Gils, Zach Sawyer.
Here.
April 4th, I'm really not here. Okay, are there any public comments? There are none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, but we do want to point out, consideration of a burn request from Bill's Electric, we will take that off consent agenda and we will put that under our new business to have a separate discussion. So for the consent agenda, it was summary list of claims. Are there any questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. You got both of those?
No.
One made a motion over.
I support it, whoever.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a roll call, please? Funker?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Gils?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Rensing?
Here, aye.
There's something in the weather.
I'm trying to get here and I can't get here.
You're here.
He's miserable.
Let's go ahead and discuss the burn request right away, that we have from Bill's Electric. He has requested that he would like to do a burn, I can't read his handwriting. Prairie grass on the west side of our property, on D Street, approximately the week of April 6th through 10 or April 3rd through 18, depending on the weather conditions. The discussion that we want to have is if we have a
I would
Burn ban, or what do you suggest?
I would recommend not burning at this time. As dry it is and as windy as it is, and as many fires have been through the countryside, I think we need to table it.
Okay, let's wait.
To know whether
We'll decline the request for now. Improves with rain, we hope and pray, then he can come back and submit another request.
Well, he does have in there, depending on weather conditions.
True.
Yeah, but who decides that?
Who's going to decide? So for this time period, I think
Well, I think, yeah, if he confers with the city or whatever, and they call one of our local firemen or
I think we ought to just wait too. Let's just wait. He can come back.
He's got plenty of time yet.
Yeah, he can come back.
I don't think two weeks is going to hurt burning the dead grass off.
Yep, he's talking about next week or the week after.
But if we get rain tonight, like they're talking, after three quarter, and he wants to burn next week, would that be a problem?
If we get the winds like we, I don't, I don't know.
Obviously, if it's windy, we wouldn't, but
I would like to wait to see if we get more rain myself. Let's wait to see if it even rains. It's a forecast, that's my opinion. Do you want to make a motion, anyone, or do we want to have further discussion, or or do we just want to tell Galen, not now? Do we need to take a motion on that?
What's the typical procedure?
We should, if you want action. Galen's requested for about three or, past three or four years, he burns just along that fence line right there. So it has been approved in the past, it's not different.
Right.
Reason we kind of brought up earlier, whatever, is Sioux County, Lyon County, some of the counties are in a burn ban. Not sure if O'Brian County in the near future is, and I think, not speaking for you, Greg, you're referring to is, is there something we can approve, maybe today, because if, let's say, the conditions change in the next week, it's going to be another couple of weeks before he comes back and makes a request. Is there something you're willing to prove now? And if not, he can certainly can request, you know, for the April 15th meeting, if the conditions change. If there's no action, then yeah, you don't have to take any action. If there's some type of motion you want to consider, we should take action on that.
Zach, what were you going to say?
I was just, Scott can answer it.
Okay. Okay. So, what do we want to do? I don't want to waste too much time talking about it. Have him come back?
What was the dates he was talking about?
Next week, April 6th through the 11th, or 13th through the 18th? Have him check with the fire department first?
I would think that would accommodate him a little easier. I mean, if we have rain, an inch of rain in the next week, and he wants to burn it next week, and his conditions are right?
Call the fire department, and they say, yeah.
Approval upon consent with the fire department or something?
Yep, Jerry wants the responsibility.
Well, somebody's got to take responsibility at some point.
I mean, just at the conditions we're at, I don't want to give him to go ahead and do it.
The way it is currently, no. And I don't think he will do it either. I mean
I think technically, the council has to approve a
A burn, a controlled burn.
That's, that's the way it's been.
I think that's the way the ordinance is written, so
But you could approve it upon certain parameters and conditions if you so choose.
So no burn, or burn with approval?
I'll make a motion, we need to grant the permission with approval.
By who?
I would say Brad, Brad or Brad, Brad's recommendation, Brad's on the fire department.
My recommendation is not to approve until we get wet.
Hold on, we have a motion.
We have a motion.
So your motion is?
That we give him the permission, subject to approval by the city or fire department, whatever, fire chief.
Is there a second?
I'll support that.
Okay, is there any discussion now? There's no discussion? I'm going to take a roll call, please. Gils?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Hent?
No.
Rensing?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
We will ask that Galen, the day he chooses to burn, you know, he's got to call us and let us know exactly when he's going to do it, and we'll tell him if that's a good to go or not, so pray for rain. All right, let's move forward. Number three on our agenda is considering the change of a date for our council meeting in May. It's scheduled for Wednesday, May 6th. Scott's going to be out of town, we have a lot that could be coming up, so we would like to move that to Tuesday, May 5th, at 4:30 in the afternoon.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Any comments, questions? May I have a roll call, please? Sawyer?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Rensing?
Aye.
Gils?
Aye.
Thank you. And then number four on our agenda is considering the resolution to authorize the redemption of outstanding urban renewal revenue annual appropriation capital loan note, series 2007B dated October 17, 2007. What that means is, we would like to pay off the Aquatic Center note six years ahead of time, and Scott will share a little more details on what that amount in savings is.
Yeah, just briefly, or whatever, I think everyone's aware, we talked about this during the budget process, total outstanding, on the note, I think, what is our exact payment? About 1.4 million, Ange, to pay it off.
Yes.
By paying it off six years in advance, we will save $210,352.50. So we are in a good position there to pay that note off, so
Wonderful.
It's a good savings.
Yep. Any questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion to consider this resolution?
I'd just like to commend the city management for the good financial foresight in being able to pay this thing off in six years early.
Absolutely.
It's, you know, good management.
It's good reflection, actually, on some of the growth we've had because of that too. That's, that's helped us be able to pay that off, so, thank you.
Awesome.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Support.
Thank you. Any further discussion, comments? Roll call, please. Gils?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Rensing?
Aye.
Then, number five is considering the scope of services agreement with RDG, planning and design. You were all given information that we were able to read through, but what we're going to do here at our council meeting is just go through and hit on some of the items, and Scott is going to share that with us.
I'll kind of give you abbreviated version, based on our last council meeting, council recommended to contact RDG Planning and Design to prepare a scope of services. What you have kind of before you is, is that scope of services to move through the preliminary design for potential event center. One thing you'll see in here all the time, Mike Bell with RDG continues to refer to it as "The Lodge at Sheldon Crossing," or "At the Crossing." That's a name he came up with, the committee or nobody else has named the name, so if you see that all the time, it's in reference to the regional event center that we're talking about, and I'm sure that's something, as the process moves forward, we would, you know, work on that as well. Basically, just to highlight a few things, kind of some of the steps without reading through everything, and certainly ask questions as, as we move forward here. Basically, the biggest part of the scope of services is to validate the project specifics as it relates to specifically the event center. Items that are included are size, capacity, functions, variety of systems, from electrical, mechanical, the type of structure, that's been talked about a lot, the finishes, landscaping, the lighting, all those type elements. A couple of things I do want to point out that are not necessarily included in the scope of services from a cost standpoint, as requested from them, would be a topographic survey of the area, kind of a site survey, and speaking with some folks about that, estimated that would be an additional about $4,000, is what we're estimating for that, so I want to make you aware of that, that is not in the scope. And then also the geotechnical survey, for some of the ground, as far as, you know, where the road, the parking area, and the building would set, that would be another potential about $2,500. Those would be separate contracts that we would have to work out, that are separate from RDG. Other items included, of course, are the design plans, which would include for, for the access road, having access into the area, the outdoor spaces, and of course, the, the parking area. One of the items that he talked about was, was possible tours of similar type facilities with the committee, if we wanted to go to a couple of facilities, you know, in the area, that we could get a better idea and grasp of room space, accommodations, all the items that would go into, you know, that type setting. He says, different committees like to do that, some don't like to do that, so I asked him, could you give me a price if we did not do that? He estimated that would be a reduction of about $3,000, if we did not do that type of bus tour with the time and commitment that would take on their end. The other items, kind of talking about some of the public engagement, what he would like to do and recommend is continue to work with a design committee, that's kind of been involved with that, on, you know, different specifics of the facility. So those are things that, you know, we'd try to work through that. And then the design team with RDG, they provide, you know, a schedule, phasing of the project, budget to include, you know, probable, you know, construction costs and those type items, various drawings of the building, site plans, 3D models, and different, you know, phases as we, you know, would move through that as well.
One thing we'll point out, real quick, since you're pausing and taking a break. The design committee, I would like to keep that as our core committee, because we have been meeting, Zach, you're on that, Brad is now on that, and the time that we've invested so far, I think we're still at that point where it comes to design, we're just now tapping into that. So the design committee I'd like to keep as our core committee that's been meeting.
Then working through those items, then basically kind of getting to the cost, what they recommend is, is approximate total cost of $148,000. This does include the reimbursables. He does have an estimate for how many meetings and whatnot coming to Sheldon, some of their project work. If we'd go above and beyond that scope of services, that would be some additional cost or reductions, depending on what he did. A lot of times you see a cost in addition plus reimbursables, so this is a not to exceed number, and the reimbursements for, for travel, food, if you'd have to stay overnight, that is included in that $148,000.
I have a question on that.
Yep.
This $148,000 figure, is that, would that be included if we move forward with the project in terms of their overall
Building out.
10 to 15 percent fee?
Okay.
Or is that, in other words, if we build a $4 million building and they charge us 12 percent, that's $480,000, am I going to be able to deduct $148,000 of that, or am I going to have to add $148,000 onto the 480? Because he doesn't say in that agreement, that I could find.
That's correct. I did not ask him for an estimate on cost breakdown
I can tell you that.
For the rest of the project.
I certainly hope that that would be included, and I would not consider approving it without having it be included. That is too much money to have, and then have to pay the full architectural fee. You guys understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I agree, I had the same question. Because we're at about 3.5 percent of a 4.5 million dollar project right now, with that
Shut up, that's what I'm getting at, you know, I don't want to spend, you know, 4 percent, or, didn't he originally tell us somewhere around 12 percent or 15 percent?
Norm is between 12 and 15 percent.
Yeah, so if you take, you know, 15 percent, well, that's $600,000. Now, if I got to add another 150 smack onto it, you know, that, I'm sitting back here saying, wait, wait a minute. I can darn near build a, I can, a parking lot or two for that.
Yeah, if you look, the, the final, this just brings us through preliminary design, and then the, the services that are not included, which are future work, are the final design. So this basically brings you to the point of, you know, preparing the bid documents and all that.
I understand that, but you understand what I'm saying?
Yep, yep.
And then, I just, I need this, because, as you know, my pension for what we pay in reference to what we get, sometimes I'm frustrated with architects and engineers. But, is it required by statute that we have to have an architect or an engineer to build this project? I just am asking the question.
I think you would have to, in terms of fire, to get the Fire Marshal's stamp of approval, it would have to have
I think for engineers
I don't know, I mean, I'm asking the question.
Even outside of that, I mean, everybody has to follow, I mean, certain fire codes, regardless of public facilities. I think by, by state code, I think
That's what I'm wondering.
It's required for public facilities to have, now, to what extent of preliminary design, it could go directly to final design, that, I couldn't answer that question.
And then one final follow-up on that, and deals with the money again, but the numbers that he's throwing out, and in that proposal, his estimate, you know, was, what, 3.8, 3.9 to 4.2, or something like that, does that include the 12 percent architectural fee, or is that 12 percent in, or 15 percent in addition too? Because now, all of a sudden, a $4.2 million building is all of a sudden going to become a 4.7, 4.6 million dollar building. And somehow, I just have a sneaky suspicion that his fees are going to be above those numbers.
I would agree.
Well, that concerns me.
Now, keep in mind that the number is just a number.
I understand. But, but whatever the number, final number is, I want to know how we're going to do the math on it.
Yep, and that's, I mean, once we get, I have, I think we need to get to and through the preliminary design
Yeah.
In order to get a better grasp on what that number is.
I agree, fully. I'm not, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I definitely
But these are questions we need to raise, yep.
On how that first $148,000 is going to be applied.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I'll shut up.
If we go with the preliminary designs, we're already sticking in $148,000.
Without a doubt.
What's that?
If we go with the preliminary design without even asking him, and we, we stick to it, then he's going to say, well, that's above and beyond. We're hand tied. You know what I'm saying, we're going forward with it now, we're saying, okay, well, up to $148,000, we don't know if that's included or not, so now, you know, either way, we're [inaudible]
Randy's saying that we're going to spend, if we approve this tonight, without knowing the answer to that question, then we basically have spent $148,000 already, then if they come back and say, no, that's not included in the 15 percent, then all of a sudden, now we've added another $148,000 to the bill. That's what you're saying.
Yeah, I can get clarification on that relatively quick.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think if, my suggestion would be if we do approve this tonight, that we approve it with subject to the understanding that it is part of the 15 percent, or whatever the number is, whatever the architectural percentage is. I don't want to just give him 15 if he only wants 12.
Yeah.
Either. Or if he wants to be decent, we could charge him 8.
Well, we can base, I mean, he certainly should be able to give us a number on, based on the scope of the project
Yeah.
What the final design, and give us a breakdown of all your fees
Yeah.
Through construction administration, here's preliminary design, $150,000, this final design, $150,000, construction administration, other X amount of dollars, here's your percentage, here's your dollar amount, based on a 4, 4.5 million dollar building.
I would like to see a breakdown of their fees and/or how our dollars are being used by them.
Yeah, this, I mean, he provides the whole scope of how it's being used.
But, I mean, a breakdown.
Yeah, yep, yep, no, we, I can ask for that.
So is there anything else you want to share off of this? Did you hit all the punch lists?
Yep, yep, and just kind of the proposed schedule, you know, this is preliminary. What he did talk in here, you see some things that he mentions, the park board, and he is referring to the park and rec board. He fills in a scene of being advantageous, and we do have representation, that's been on the committee, Greta, Geese, who's been our, our park board member, has been at the meetings, and Jake's been there as well, that we talked about maybe having that group inviting them to, you know, some of the meetings, like as we finish and wrap up this, this master plan, like we're looking at April 15th, the park and rec board meets on April 14th, they'll probably have their regular board meeting on that day, and then we'd invite them, talking about on, like, maybe noon on the April 15th, to have kind of a final community park committee, where we wrap up kind of our first phase of the, the community park plan and the master plan, to get that updated and finalized as well, so. Just to bring you up to speed on kind of the proposed schedule there a little bit, so that makes more sense. Is there anything else that you want to ask?
Couple of questions, or clarification, you know, they have the site of a 400, 600,000, I'm assuming that's development of the park area, the pond, bridge, and whatnot, all that, that
Well, other items are, you know, the access road into the area, I mean, that's not in the scope or the fee cost breakdown.
So, for the 400, 600,000, what is that, what is that for then?
Landscaping, parking lot.
Yeah, and entry drive.
Yep, that's what I read.
The entry drive for underneath the port, the
Parking for 80 or 90 cars.
Okay.
Concrete parking lot for 80 or 90 cars, then an additional, I think it was 100 and some car
180.
180 parking, and then just the concrete drive, and maybe some landscaping around the outside is the way I understood it, that's all.
Develop landscaping plans.
Nothing to do with the park, or the burrow pit, or anything. To answer your question. But that parking, you know, you're talking about pretty good hunk of concrete.
Yeah, this scope of services, yeah, doesn't talk about
A half million dollars still sounds like a lot of money for a parking lot, even if it is a big parking lot.
Well, I know when we talked about the sports complex, and building it in different locations, talking about building a parking lot, we were talking, we were in the $350,000 range.
Yeah, I think
That was one of the advantages of having it by the high school for the parking lot there.
Put it in perspective a little bit, Greg, think about this, man, we spent $150,000 to take up a lot of road up front here, and how many cars you can park in that. Now, there's a little more work out there than just building the parking lot, but that's what it costs to, to build something that
Okay. And then the other question I have is, have we determined, I mean, we, at one point, the capacity, we're talking a capacity of 300, is that where it's going, or is it going to be bigger, or where is it at?
As we go through the
It said 300.
Right, and as we go through the preliminary, I think it said 3 to 400, didn't it? 3 to 400 is what it said.
It said 300 in the scope.
It said 300 in the scope.
Okay.
And there's an estimate in square footage is.
All right. I think that comes into play when we're getting down to the final design, too.
Well, I think, I think that will be determined through preliminary
That's what I meant, is preliminary, after I said that.
I mean, if we were designing for a 300, I think we need to have some sense of direction for him at this point, whether it's going to be 300 or 400, are you talking banquet style, or are you talking theater style, you know?
And is someone aware of that? That's been probably the most popular discussion item
Yep.
At the community park meetings, is, is the size, the scope, do we need to add on? We need to go to 400, 450? So to me, that's the number one thing that's going to have to be decided or discussed.
I would say the general consensus from our meetings have been, the group is leaning towards making it bigger.
And that's the word on the street I'm hearing, too, is
Make sure it's big enough.
Yes.
Yep.
Bigger means more money.
I realize that.
But we're trying to
But, and we're going to have to find that, but to build it at 300, and it's too small, and nobody wants to rent, then it doesn't do us a lot of good either, I mean
That's why when we go through the preliminary phase of it, that's where we'll come into what the nuts and bolts, and what's all that going to cost, and how many can we seat? That's the point we're getting to now, is in the preliminary phase, the actual cost for 300, 350, 400. Any other discussion, then?
And the, is there stands in place to have a public meeting to
I just wrote that down.
To just, you know, so we're transparent?
Yeah, what we're thinking, right.
Follow-up, I should have followed up on that. Follow-up, like on that 15th meeting, what we're talking about on April 15th, is if we have that joint meeting at noon with the park and rec board and the community park committee, we talked about having like a 6 o'clock meeting on, on that night or whatever, after the council meeting. I'm not sure unless you guys wanted to have the meeting at noon, I'm not sure if we need to have another review or presentation at the 4:30 meeting, but we talked about, and I talked to Mike about that, and he's receptive to that, doing like a 6 o'clock public meeting, invite the public to come, which, the other meetings are public as well, but to give them a different opportunity to come.
Yep.
So yes, that's the plan, 6 o'clock?
Certainly, while Mike's here, and from a cost standpoint. While he's here, we try to hit it up as much as possible to make, you know, two, three presentations that same day.
If he shows.
He's only missed one.
He'll show. Any other questions? Or discussion?
So just to follow up, I guess the biggest thing is, is kind of that breakdown of, of the services, okay, the 148 now, but what are the final ones going forward? Is this now a 3, 4 percent of the total project, towards that 12, 15 percent of their design fees, and what would those potential costs be? If I get that put together and whatnot, and get that out to show that to you, and it's covered within that 12 to 15 percent? Is that kind of what I'm hearing from
Okay.
Everyone on that? Yep, I can, I can easily do that.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion that includes that contingency?
Well, I, I have, I continually ask people, and I cannot find, and maybe it's because it's me, but, and I'll readily admit that, that I certainly have an opinion, but I can't find anybody who has talked negatively. I've had several people voice concerns about the O and M costs of it, operation and maintenance, as I think we are all concerned about that. I cannot see any reason why we should not move forward with the, the scope of services agreement, subject to clarification on the architectural fees and percentages. And I think it's also important to understand that the only practical way to use, or to build this, is to use, utilize TIF dollars. I understand there's a person or some people around that are saying that you can't use TIF dollars. I don't know what basis of information they're getting that from, they obviously know something that our attorneys don't know, and we don't know, but I believe that's a misnomer, and I don't think the general public ought to believe that. I don't think that we have ever done anything outside the rules of TIF, and frankly, I'm[1641.41] I don't think that we have ever done anything outside the rules of TIF, and frankly, I'm offended for being accused of it, and I think it's time that it stops and that the general public knows that this council has always acted in the best interest and financial interests of the citizens. And with that said, I'll make a motion that we approve the scope of services, subject to the clarification on the architectural fees.
Support that motion. Discussion?
Brad seconded it.
Yep.
Just one point of clarification, actually, probably two. One is regards to the financing portion of it, this being soft costs of a project could and can be rolled into, once we do an entire bond, so my thought is, you know, is if we proceed, and if we proceed, that this financing would be rolled into our urban renewal capital loan note and stuff that we would get later on.
I thought we'd already kind of decided that.
We did, I just wanted to clarify for everybody that, how are we paying one hundred and forty-eight thousand now when we haven't bonded, and we don't even know what we're bonding for yet? We can do that, this is an eligible project if you so choose to use TIF for it. The other item, just to point out, to clarify, and I've talked to some of you about this, is the operating of it, because as I've shared very openly, that's one of my biggest concerns, is the operations. Kurt and I have been, of course, communicating with another, a number of other entities on kind of how their operations work, one thought that we have is already working on a request for proposal from an operations standpoint, and that's something we'd want to talk through here over the next couple of months with the council, is, you know, are we looking to operate it? Do we want to look for another company, or firm, or corporation to operate it? That through this preliminary design phase, I think it'd be critical to move forward to get that request for proposal out to other companies. We know there is other interest out there from groups that are interested in running it, and I think that'd be critical to have something like that in place prior to proceeding, you know, to the final design, or at least for sure, construction of the facility, so we know at least where we're at. So from a budgeting standpoint, a staffing standpoint, all those type items, there's a lot of details that are going to have to get worked out before we proceed to that point, so, those are the only comments I had.
Okay. Any other comments? There are none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Rensing?
Aye.
Hint?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Bunker?
Aye.
Thank you, and thank you, Scott, for making those clarifications. Number six on our agenda is reviewing amendment number one to the amended and restated urban renewal plan. Do we need to go through, we don't need to go through all of that.
It's completely up to you, I have a lot of information here if you want me to share. One thing I would like to share is, and Ron kind of alluded to this a little bit, and where this is coming from, is this is all dictated by the legislative changes that have taken place with urban renewal projects, tax increment financing, you're trying to be more transparent, so, you know, we are following, we don't use our local attorneys even for this, that's not in their scope of services, we use Allers and Cooney, which is a law firm that specializes in urban renewal projects, financing, bonding, all those type items. We actually had three attorneys that were working on this amendment to help us out, to draft the amendment language, so, once again, follow-up on Ron's comments, we're making sure that we are following all the legal parameters of what is allowed to use tax increment financing. So this, along with what we just discussed as far as a project, actually touches on and identifies where we anticipate probably for sure, every couple of years, we will have to go through and amend this, depending on what type projects we have, how we want to utilize tax increment financing. So what we have, and I'm not going to go through every project unless you have specific questions, try to identify in here, one, remove the projects that we've completed, you know, we took out like the Trilogy Village project, some rungur projects, the first street project, then the industrial park, the aquatic center from the financing part, remove the items that we're finished with, like the Highway eighteen project, we had a number on the downtown streetscape project, and then adding in, keeping some of the existing ones in there of what we use, you know, financing for, the ongoing basic infrastructure improvements, which are allowed by state code for urban renewal type projects, and estimated amount, and then future projects such as the regional event center. So if it's not legal and it's not allowed, they will tell us it's not legal and it's not allowed, and/or what needs to be required in this amendment from a language standpoint, from a public transparency standpoint, so they did help us draft and put this together, so. With that, that's all I had.
Doesn't that also require a meeting with the other local governments?
Yeah, there's two items that you'll consider tonight, first one is setting a date and time for a notice of consultation meeting.
Okay.
Basically, that consultation meeting will be a notice we send directly to the Sheldon Community School District and O'Brien County. It actually changed a few years ago, it used to be Northwest Island Community College also was included with that, the community colleges in the state of Iowa requested not to be a part of that, so they've always been very supportive, and I've actually talked to Dr. Subey out at the college, she's fully aware of where we're at and what we're looking at doing. So one would be having that consultation meeting, which is a requirement, gives them the opportunity to make any comments if they so choose, and then we would actually also then set a date and time for a public hearing to actually adopt and accept this amendment to our urban renewal plan. So with that, is there any other questions?
The date and time for that notice of consultation meeting would be April eighth, and we would have to take action on that, and then we'd also take action on the public hearing, which would be May five, so, are there any other questions or discussions?
What were those dates, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. The first one...
April eighth.
Yep, April eighth.
That's the consultation meeting?
Consultation, mm-hmm.
So that's a week from tonight.
Yep, and then the public hearing will be May five, that Tuesday that we've moved our council meeting to.
That's our council meeting.
So, any other questions?
So if I understand this consultation meeting, basically what you do is just send an invitation out to them and ask them if they want to come?
Yep, it goes to the two entities, and just past, it's either been superintendent of schools has come to a couple of them, or one of the school board members, and then we send it to Barb Roy at the county, and in the past, they've, either Barb or one of the supervisors.
So it's not required of them to take individual action on their own merit of any kind?
Correct, no, we send them notice, we actually send them this, the attorneys actually gave us a document of information that's required to go to them, to make them aware, they can review it. We come, and I basically kind of go through some of the amendments and the projects, they have seven days to actually respond and give us a written response, and we have a period of time that we need to respond back to them, and that all needs to be done prior to our public hearing on May the fifth.
Did you have to have Sioux County also?
No, we're not required to, because they have their own zoning, and they're not within the two-mile urban renewal plan area.
Okay. Anything else? All right, then, we'll need to take action on line A, setting the date and time for the notice of consultation meeting, which will be April eighth. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, roll call, please.
Rensing?
Aye.
Hint?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Bunker?
Aye.
Thank you, and then the second portion is the setting the date and time for the public hearing, which is Tuesday, May five, two thousand and fifteen, at four-thirty in the afternoon. Do we have a motion?
It's all moved.
Support.
Thank you, a roll call, please.
Bunker?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Rensing?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Hint?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, and then last is comments, do we have any comments?
You didn't take the microphone, so I didn't think so. Council, do you have any comments?
I just had a comment today about not being able to find the broadcast on Thursdays on TV, she said it hasn't been on there as of recently.[1713.33]